October 7, 2024, City of Vandelia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no approval of minutes, and that brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards, and we have an introduction, Parks and Recreation Building Maintenance Technician. Mr. Swederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to introduce Jared Kane from Parks and Recreation Department. He's in the back row, and he got the protocol. He stood up right away. Jared brings to the city over 10 years of experience in building maintenance. He was a maintenance technician at Sodexa, where he managed a range of projects from preventative and scheduled maintenance to emergency repairs at the 1.5 million square foot P&amp;G facility. He was a maintenance supervisor, project manager for All Serve Restoration, a supervisor for lawn property management. Jared possesses a diverse skill set, including blueprint reading, carpentry, plumbing, electrical experience, and safety compliance. He and his wife Kristy live in Huber Heights and have four children. He enjoys cooking and loves spending time outdoors, and we're happy to have him at the city.
All right, thank you. Welcome. All right, next we have an award from our Fire Chief, Chief Folick.
Good evening. I'd like to have Nate Sevy come up with his family and stand at the backdrop here, and I will tell you a little story about Nate.
Does no one know my last name?
You want me to say your last name? Mr. Sevy is going to take his position over there.
Sevy, yeah.
Oh, what is it?
Sir.
Okay, I'll get you. Right there. The City of Vandelia Division of Fire is proud to present this award to seven-year-old Nathan Nathaniel Sevy, whose quick thinking and bravery on July 21, 2024 truly exemplified the spirit of heroism. When his beloved grandmother Carol Hall fell seriously ill, Nate demonstrated remarkable maturity by calling 911, ensuring that she received the urgent medical attention from the City of Vandelia Division of Fire that she needed. His actions not only saved her life, but also highlighted the importance of staying calm in a crisis. Now in second grade, Nate was a graduate of the Passport to Safety Program from Helkey Elementary School two years ago as a kindergartner. Nate, your courage and compassion inspires us all, and we celebrate your extraordinary effort to protect your family. Thank you for being a true hero.
Congratulations, Nate. All right, the next four items are the Introduction and Oath of Office for some new staff members, so I will turn it over to Mr. Swederman.
Thank you, Your Honor. We will introduce everyone first, and then we will go down and do the Oath of Office for those that are being recognized this evening. So if you could stand when I call your name, I would appreciate it. We will start with the introduction for firefighter paramedic Inspector Bradley King. Bradley joined the Division of Fire as a part-time employee in June of 2019. He obtained his paramedic certification in July of '22, and he continues to further his knowledge by attending classes related to fire service. Most recently, he attended a pyrotechnics course and holds a valuable certification that is needed during the city's fireworks show. He also took a week-long course to be certified in car seat installs and is one of two certified employees that allow us to offer this service to our community. Additionally, Bradley has received multiple awards and letters of commendation over the years with the Division of Fire. Bradley delivers top-tier service and will continue to be an asset as he moves to his full-time role within the Division of Fire. Next, we'll introduce firefighter EMT Jacob Klein. Jacob started with the Division of Fire as a member of the Fire Explorer Program while still in high school. He is a graduate of Vandelia Butler High School and joined the Division of Fire as a part-time employee in June of 2017. Jacob has continued his education after graduating and is currently enrolled at Clark State to obtain his paramedic certification. Additionally, Jacob has received multiple awards and letters of commendation over the years with the Division of Fire. Jacob also delivers top-tier service and will continue to be an asset as he moves to his full-time role within the Division of Fire. Tonight, we will also introduce our newest police officer, Kelsey Hicks. We are pleased to inform that Kelsey Hicks will be appointed as a probationary police officer within the Division of Police. She reported to duty today, where she will begin her initial orientation and field training. Her unit number is 229. She is a graduate in 2011 from Suda E. Butler High School in Louisville, Kentucky. She attended Bellarmine University, where she earned a Bachelor of Arts in Criminal Justice. She was also a member of the Knights Women's Softball Team. She started her law enforcement career with the Metro Nashville Police Department, where she was an officer from 2019 to 2022. She has spent the last two and a half years with the Jeffersonville, Indiana Police Department. Kelsey will reside in Vandelia upon her appointment. Please join us in congratulating her for her success in the selection process and welcome her as our newest full-time police officer. In our last introduction, we'll be for police, we'll do an oath of office and introduction of our newest sergeant in the police department, Robert Brazel. Bob graduated from Tippecanoe High School in 1999 and attended Sinclair and Wright State. He graduated from Sinclair's Basic Peace Officer Training Academy in 2003. Prior to his appointment to the Vandelia Division of Police, he worked as an adult probation officer with Miami County Municipal Court. He was appointed as a Vandelia Police Officer in 2004. During his employment with our police division, he has served as a field training officer, criminal investigator, tactical officer with the Regional Emergency Response Team, and an acting watch supervisor. Additionally, Bob has a passion for training and is willingly taking extra responsibilities as a department's firearms instructor, less-lethal munitions instructor, and an OC instructor. He resides in Butler Township and has two sons. We congratulate him in his success in completing the promotional process and welcome him this evening as our newest police sergeant. Now, if I didn't mess up the order, we will go down and swear them in the order that they were introduced. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Bradley King.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws of the United States.
and obey the laws of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will, in all respects.
that I, in all respects.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
and ordinances.
and the ordinances.
of the City of Vandelia.
and the City of Vandelia.
and will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office.
the duties of the office.
of firefighter, paramedic inspector.
of firefighter, paramedic inspector.
within the Division of Fire.
within the Division of Fire.
If you'll raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jacob Klein.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws of the United States.
and will obey the laws of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will, in all respects.
that I will, in all respects.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the City of Vandelia.
of the City of Vandelia.
and I will faithfully discharge.
and I will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office.
the duties of the office.
of firefighter, EMT.
of firefighter, EMT.
within the Division of Fire.
within the Division of Fire.
What's that? No, we're going here. We've got to get enough front of the drop there, so. All the pictures. You guys can stay there if you like. Okay, if you'll raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kelsey Hicks.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws of the United States.
and obey the laws of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will, in all respects.
that I will, in all respects.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the City of Vandelia.
of the City of Vandelia.
and will faithfully discharge.
and will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office.
the duties of the office.
of police officer.
of police officer.
within the Division of Police.
within the Division of Police.
Congratulations. If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Robert Brazel.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
and will obey the laws of the United States.
and will obey the laws of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
and of the state of Ohio.
that I will, in all respects.
that I will, in all respects.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
observe the provisions of the Charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the City of Vandelia.
of the City of Vandelia.
and will faithfully discharge.
and will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office.
the duties of the office.
of police sergeant.
of police sergeant.
within the Division of Police.
within the Division of Police.
All right, and if you were here for the Introduction and Oath of Office and don't want to hang around for the rest of the meeting, this would be a good time to...
Escape.
Escape. No pushing. All right, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if someone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. In accordance with Ordinance 84-01, time limitation on speaking, no person shall be allowed to speak longer than five minutes on the same matter until every member desiring to speak on that matter has had an opportunity to do so. Anyone wishing to make a comment shall wait for recognition from me before beginning to speak, and all comments need to be addressed to me. This is an opportunity for you to make statements. It's not a time to place for, it's not a time or place for questions, debate, or dialogue. Comments that amount to personal attacks of any kind will not be permitted. Only the speaker recognized to speak shall have the floor. So please be respectful and refrain from speaking amongst yourselves while someone else is speaking. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium.
And after all of that. All right, we got one.
I'll lower your expectations right now because I'm not much of a public speaker, but...
Neither am I. Let's go.
I'm coming to you as a citizen of Vandelia since 1977, very proud citizen and somewhat active citizen over the years. Um, thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Tanya Brown, 4428 Poplar Creek Road, Vandelia, Ohio.
I knew who you were, so I just slipped past, you know?
Oh, gosh. All right. As stated in a letter that I sent to council members and the mayor, I have read through much of the 2020 comprehensive plan for Vandelia and have noted some conflicts I see in the plan and the interest to change the zoning at 7848 South Brown School Road from agricultural to RSF4. It is my understanding that this comprehensive plan has been approved and adopted by the city council. The comprehensive plan recommended this area be reserved for low-density, single-family housing development. With that in mind, it would only make sense that if a new housing development were proposed, it would be low-density, single-family, and similar in lot size and quality exterior building materials as the well-established and desirable Foxfire subdivision across the street. The subdivision there is zoned RSF2 and RSF1 with a small section recently converted to RSF4 bordering commercial land on Poe Avenue. Maintaining the same quality of construction material and lot size would seem to make sense and strengthen the desirability of both neighborhoods. It would also protect property values in both neighborhoods. As Criteria 5 stipulates, it requires that the rezoning not adversely affect the economic viability of existing development or vacant land within the city. Mr. Mayor, as an experienced and successful Realtor, you may have some opinion on the probability of an RSF4 having some effect on the desirability and property values of Foxfire and surrounding properties. Okay, let me catch my breath. RSF4 is referred to as high-density in the city zoning code. I know that seems to be controversial, but it is called high-density, and it's my understanding that there is no subdivision in the City of Vandelia that is currently zoned RSF4. If that's not correct, someone can correct me on that. The lot sizes proposed would be minimum 50 feet wide with a 7.5-foot side yard setback. I'm not quite sure if you could park maybe one car between houses on the street, but try to get a visual of 15 feet between houses. Creating a lot of 0.17, that's where you may have seen that in remarks during the planning commission, acres, that is 7,425 square feet. For perspective, that is smaller than the lots in the subdivision Edgewood. I went on to Realtor.com and did some checking on lot sizes there. The developer states that the lots will be comparable to R1, but appears he has come up with some rather creative math to corroborate that statement. He has used the gross acreage of the entire parcel of land, including the acreage that is undeveloped, and then dividing that by the total number of lots, giving the illusion that the density of the project is somehow high-density R1. This is quite alarming and a questionable tactic, in my opinion, to justify approval, not only by the planning commission, but by this council. Am I done?
We've got 30 seconds.
Oh, gosh. I have so much to say.
It's a little time.
Yeah. Um, oh, gosh. Number one, we don't know that Arbor Homes is going to be the builder. That is, you know, we have no idea that that is even a probability. Um, oh, gosh. The open space, I'm very worried about the open space. Who's going to maintain that? Who's going to be liable if a child is injured in that property? Is that, who is going to take care and manage the downed trees? That is a non-troversial area, and it's going to be a very dangerous left undeveloped. Also, if it can be developed, which he said everything can be developed, are we looking at another 200 houses in there eventually someday? Rezoning to R4 is a very, very dramatic change for that property.
Okay. Appreciate your email and your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? And remember to state your name and address for the record. You've done this before.
Barbara Spurgeon, 777 North Edge Drive, Vandelia. Just to continue with what she was saying, I'm not as organized with my thoughts as she was, but I took notes when the developer was talking. So he's talking about two lots per acre, and then he showed these monstrous houses that we get to pick from. I can see that these houses will be right on top of each other, and I have seen developments like that. It's just like there's no room to breathe. So I don't know. I think we ought to think very carefully about this as far as how this is going to take place. So, and, you know, the cost of the houses is what got me. I mean, I'm a senior. I can't afford those, you know, that kind of prices for a new house. I mean, I realize costs have gone up, but if you have those houses built, probably we'll have people coming from another area of town to buy those houses. So, I don't know. I know we'll add to the population of Vandelia, but, you know, I think it should benefit the residents of Vandelia first, so. But I don't know how it can, so, anyway.
Thank you.
Good evening. Robert Shanahan, 7733 South Brown School Road. Obviously, I will continue on what the previous people were talking about. Three things. The first one is traffic. No one mentioned anything about traffic. I've lived on South Brown School for over 20 years, and the traffic has increased dramatically. There are some mornings and evenings where it takes me over three minutes to turn left out of my driveway, and we're adding potentially 300 new cars across the street. Not to mention, Foxfire is adding 60 to 80 new homes in the back section for another 150 cars. Is it going to be studied, other than, we'll study it after the development goes up? Second thing, to put the lot size in perspective, I have a tennis court on my property. Single tennis court is 7,200 square feet. We're talking about lot sizes that are just barely larger than that, and they're claiming to put Foxfire-type homes on that little property. Foxfire, if you take the entire area of Foxfire, which is pretty much identical, 85 acres, right, Foxfire has two lots that are going to be considered open space, while the property that's being proposed will have 37 acres empty, basically because there's a creek and a big drop-off, like was mentioned before. So to claim the low-density, even though these, if houses are built, you will see houses 15 feet apart all along Brown School, approximately 22 homes on their lot plan. On the west side of Brown School, there's 10 homes, spread out by sometimes hundreds of feet, completely different look, although the comprehensive plan states that both sides should look the same and feel the same. I think that's all I actually had. Yeah, the lot size. So getting back to the open space, Foxfire, if you take the entire 85 acres and divide it, potentially they're going to have 170 homes, pretty much identical. That's 1.8 homes per acre, not what they are considering. If you take the homes they're putting on the non-open space, that's 5.8 homes per acre. They don't compare. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Hi, thank you, Mayor Herbst. Sharon Hamby, 4410 Poplar Creek Road.
Sharon Hamby, 4410 Poplar Creek Road. We've lived on Poplar Creek for about close to 30 years. My concern to do with the R4 zoning change is traffic and safety. From the city of Vandelia, Ohio, planning and zoning code, section H in this code states, "From the zoning code, to promote, protect, the public health, safety, comfort, and convenience and general welfare of the people of Vandelia through the establishment of minimum regulations." It goes on a little bit more. But letter H states, "To ensure efficient and safe traffic and pedestrian circulation, manage congestion on the streets and improve public safety by locating buildings and uses adjacent to streets, such as a manner that they will cause the least interference with and be damaged least by traffic movements." Currently on Brown School, it's very congested. If there's accidents on 70 and 75, everybody seems to take the Vandelia exit to try to avoid that. And it can back up Brown School and Little York for extreme amount of times with a lot of traffic. They also, Brown School, they had mentioned something about like making a, I think like a widened section if they...
Turning lane, maybe, what you're referring to.
Like what they did with like Foxfire, but it still makes the actual road one lane all the way up to 40. Like if you're coming from Little York up to 40, that's one lane. They've done a lot of major projects to, like expand and take some of the hills out of Brown School. And like when you're going down Brown School, they've raised the elevations, but they've never widened the road. And it's, I don't know if it can be widened, but I think it's a concern. It's just a one, you know, it's a two-lane, single-lane road. And all the traffic that will come on to that, including like school buses and the businesses up on Brown School, all that traffic coming onto Brown School would make it very congested, and it leads into Little York, which again is very congested. It backs up the traffic.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi. Russell Burke, 4398 Poplar Creek Road in Vandelia here. I've been living here for about six or seven years now. This year, I got hit with a very hefty tax increase for property value on my home. And I'm worried that as we go forward, if we've got something that's, you know, raising, and I realize every year it's going to go up, but if we have a huge development like that and they say that our property is going to be even more valuable than it is now, being a single guy, some of us might be worried about being taxed out of our homes. So that's my two cents.
All right, thank you.
Ed Burke, 2337 Upper Trent Way. Here's a few things, the notes I took. The presentation today, they mentioned Arbor Homes. The original letter went out, said Redwood. So are they just changing, changing plans? It's not defined. Be concerned. Do your due diligence. The acreage bothers me, the way they say two acres for two lots. That's misleading. Talked about amenities. That was totally skirted. Foxfire, I built 25 years ago. They promised a playground to be built in the neighborhood. 25 years later, no one built it. Traffic is of the utmost importance. You have steep grades on Brown School and Little York. You also have a narrow tunnel. There's nowhere for the traffic to go. So I would recommend the traffic study has to happen before you start building more homes in that area. The steep grades are a major concern. You lose visibility. The trucks can barely get up and down the hills. People tend to stop with the narrow bridge. It just, more traffic flow through there seems like a nightmare. You also have e-commerce that's getting bigger and bigger. So now you're going to have UPS, FedEx, Amazon, home food deliveries, you name it. That will also play into a factor. So please do your due diligence and consider those factors.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Jim Rathburn, 819 Bristol. Just want to say there's also a railroad track and a firing range close by to this area that needs to be taken into consideration when you're making these decisions.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? Everybody's getting brave.
Hello. My name's Bridget Johnson, and I live at 4432 Poplar Creek Road. And I just wanted to make a quick comment. My husband and I moved to Vandelia in 2008, and we moved to Poplar Creek Road because we loved the area. You feel like you're in the country, but you're so close to everything. And I think that if we build up the area, it's going to feel like you're living in Huber Heights and not Vandelia. You're going to lose the small-town feel that you have currently in Vandelia.
All right. Thanks for the comments. Okay, anyone else?
Kate Flynn, 876 Deerhurst. We've been here, my husband and I, for close to 30 years. We know that the other side was going to be developed at some point. But you have an opportunity to make it similar as our neighborhood, to really make this part of Vandelia special with bigger lot sizes, houses that are really comparable to what we have at the Foxfire subdivision, not just having lot sizes that are so much smaller and saying that they're comparable. So I would just like you to not look at, not building over there, but build the right place over there so Vandelia can be really, this can be a special place.
All right, thank you.
Patty Tackett, 771 Johnson Station Road. I just wanted to come here to, I have already talked to the commission in regards to my desire to open up my outside shooting range and my valley shooting grounds, which is also at 7771 Johnson Station Road. I have followed up after coming to the meeting. I did not hear back from anybody, so I recontacted Mr. Sweeterman in regards to my desire. I was told at that time that you guys had a study session and were not going to consider my request. We did have some follow-up conversation. I did advise him that I was going to look into this further. I did not know about the housing development at that time when I approached you guys. I actually got the letter after that. And I was never told that, that a lot of the reason was because of this housing. I think that that was dishonest, and it was information that was not released to me that should have been released to me. So with all that being said, I just want to make sure that everybody's noted that I am going to continue to look into that. I realize that is in your hands, but I just want to make you aware. So when you're considering some of these issues in the residential, which came up when we got shut down in 2017, I want you to consider that that is what I'm going to continue to do. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? All right. We'll move along. We have no public hearing. And we are now ready for the city manager's report, where we have three information items. Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. First is that leaf collection is beginning and will continue until December. The schedule is on our website. We ask residents to rake into the street adjacent to the curb. In areas without curb, leave it as close to the edge of pavement as possible. We do have a large debris drop-off day this coming Saturday. October the 12th will be from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Public Works Garage. It includes the acceptance of, excuse me, includes the acceptance of yard brush. Proof of residency is required, and this will be our final large debris drop-off for 2024. I'd also like to mention, kind of adjacent to this topic, that the city has completed their run-through the city for picking up debris from the most recent storm. The Vandelia Fall Festival will be Saturday, October the 12th, at the Sports Complex from 12:00 to 6:00. There will be live music, feud trucks, a pumpkin patch, a corn pit, vendors, inflatables, games, arts and crafts, and more. Entry is free, and all ages are welcome. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Now, we have no action items, nor do we have any old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of this evening, that being Resolution 24-R-58. Mr. McDonald by title only.
A resolution amending the general service pay plan for employees of the city of Vandelia, Ohio for tax, excuse me, for the year 2025.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeterman.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a recommendation to, for a 3.5% increase to the top and bottom of each pay range for our full-time positions for 2025. This adjustment will allow us to continue to attract and retain high-performing quality employees and aligns with our citywide policy goals adopted in 2023.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 24-R-58 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Farson, a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve Resolution 24-R-58 as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember First?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 24-R-59.
A resolution amending the part-time pay plan for employees of the city of Vandelia for the year 2025.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution does the exact same thing as the previous one, except this is for our part-time employees.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 24-R-59 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilman Follak to approve Resolution 24-R-59 as presented. Are there any questions, comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember First?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 24-R-60.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a finance lease agreement with VGM Financial Services in amount not to exceed $349,736 for golf carts to be obtained through Century Equipment, a Jerry Pate Company of Hamilton, Ohio.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Castle Hills Golf Course is in the final year of a four-year golf cart lease that ends in October. We have a total of 53 club car carts that are included in the current lease with Century Equipment. During a recent presentation at the September 3rd council study session, several questions were raised concerning the proposed lease as well as leasing versus purchasing the carts. After revisiting the proposal with Century Equipment, they have resubmitted their proposal to include an adjusted interest rate for both the lease and purchase option, decreasing the rate from 7.5 to 6.49, as well as an option to pay the lease once annually instead of six payments per year. Based upon our review and cost analysis of the lease versus purchase option, we are recommending entering into a four-year lease with Century Equipment, a Jerry Pate Company of Hamilton, Ohio. VGM Financial and VGM Financial Services at an annual cost of $87,425.09 with a total lease not exceeding $349,700. This is for the carts and fleet management system, GPS. Ultimately, Your Honor and member of councils, after looking at this again, the reduced cost of the lease alone with the increased maintenance cost of ownership bring us back to the decision to continue to lease carts at Castle Hills.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 24-R-60 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Vice Mayor Blakesley to approve Resolution 24-R-60. Are there any comments or questions?
Just one comment, and that was actually two comments. One, thank you to staff. Several members of council last time had asked for some additional information and to explore the lease-first-purchase option, so I appreciate that work. And then also, I know it seems like a lot of money, but the one thing, and this was asked last time around as well, is the cart revenues at the golf course more than cover the cost of the lease agreement every year and then some. So we're covering the cost of the lease by those users of the carts at the golf course, so there's no tax money being used to fund the purchase or the lease of these golf courses at the golf course operations, so, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember First?
Yes.
Council, excuse me, Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have no ordinances in their first reading. However, we do have one ordinance in its second reading, that being Ordinance 24-20.
An ordinance rezoning 4.535 acres of land located at 6213 Miller Lane from residential, single-family to highway business and amending the zoning map of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant seeks a rezoning from the current RSF1 residential, single-family district to the HB Highway Business District for one parcel totaling 4.535 acres located at 6213 Miller Lane. The property is owned by Empowerment Temple, Inc., and on August 27, 2024, the planning commission voted 4-0 to recommend approval.
All right, thank you. And since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this particular ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record, and then your comment. All right. Being done, we'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 24-20 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve Ordinance 24-20 in its second reading. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember First?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We have no emergency ordinances, and that brings us to reports from boards and commissions where we have a variance for a accessory structure at 5409 Old Springfield Road. Mr. Sweeterman?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Welcome.
The applicants have requested a variance to permit the construction of a detached garage that would cause the total area of all accessory structures to exceed 600 square feet and 40% of the principal building footprint for the property at 5409 Old Springfield Road. The applicant has proposed adding a 1,380-square-foot detached garage to the east side of the property and moving the existing 120-square-foot shed to the west side of the property. On September 11, 2024, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted 4-0 to recommend approval with condition.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve BZA 2408. The variance for the total accessory structure area at 5409 Old Springfield Road with the condition of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilwoman Avalotus Weaver to approve the variance at 5409 Springfield Road with the conditions of the BZA. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
I was looking for the conditions of the BZA because they didn't, they didn't jump out at me.
The paved driveway.
Okay, all right. I didn't see it in the briefing. I'm very sorry. Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. And council, you have an opportunity to review the Board of Zoning Appeal minutes of September 11, the Planning Commission meeting minutes of August 27, the Vandelia Arts Council meeting minutes of January, March, April, June, and July, and August. I'm getting there. All right, are there any comments? Okay, thank you. All right, and that brings us to council comments. We'll begin with our law director, Mr. McDonald.
All right, nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, Mr. Sweeterman?
Nothing else, Your Honor.
All right. Councilmember Dugan?
I would just like everyone to please pray for North Carolina and Florida.
Amen.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lewis?
Nothing other than to praise our crowd. It was nice to have a very civil and civil discourse, and your comments were well-taken, and thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Follak?
Just to welcome our new employees, and congratulations to Sergeant Brazel on his promotion, and also congratulations to Parks and Recreation Department for securing a $50,000 CDBG grant to help offset the cost of our Victory Park Playground project, which hopefully we will be doing in 2025. So congratulations to staff on that, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fairst?
It's just a pleasure, and thank you for staff bringing in each new employee and introducing them to council, and we really appreciate that. And it's great to see you all here and participating in what goes on here, and I think all of us read your letters, read your emails, and so your input is very valuable. So thank you, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yeah, I just want to echo what everyone else has already said, you know, welcome to the new employees, and thank you for participating, because this is what we go through every month. It's just this month seems to be a little bit more interesting, but thank you for taking the time to come and write your letters and share your thoughts, because it really is your city, and we appreciate you sharing your time and interest in it. That's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Echo the same. Appreciate everyone coming and getting involved in your local government and seeing them in action. Your voice is heard, you know, and helps us make decisions from that point and see other points. Certainly, we have code to deal with as well, so we take that all in consideration. Moving on, congratulations to the Fire Division for their open house. It was a great success, I think, from just the visual, and I think Chief agrees. And that kind of segues me into then the heroic act that the young Nate Savvy did, and it proves that prevention works. Having been involved in Passport years ago, we saw that happen numerous times, and it warms my heart to see that continue. And I would like to think that there's more of those kind of situations happen that just don't get reported. So I think it's important that, you know, we teach the young those safety, safety things. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. And I agree with everything that's been said up here tonight. I appreciate everybody coming out and giving yourself an opportunity to speak, and like Councilwoman Farce said, we do receive a lot of emails with people's opinions on things, and we do read them, and we do take it very serious, and we appreciate it. Honestly, we wish more people would be involved and ask the questions that a lot of you guys did here tonight, so we appreciate you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.